I'm just frustrated.
It's okay.
What?
Good morning and welcome to the April 11th, 2019 business meeting. And I'll ask County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please take a roll.
Yes, Commissioner Staff, support today is County Council Steven Madcor, Clerk to the Board Mary Rathke. Roll today Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for With that, we're going to citizen communication first, and we have Les Poole. Please join us. Welcome.
Good morning.
And where do you live?
All right, good stuff.
Who are you?
I live in Clackamas County.
Okay, that's close enough.
Via Gladstone, via Oak Grove. Les Poole. Yeah, I sent the county some interesting photos of the Clackamas River yesterday where high rocks are submerged, and I'll take some pictures after the water drops about 15 or 18 feet. The place where the people jump off, the water was running at least a foot over the top of it, so I haven't seen that in a long time, a long time. Yeah, I mean, the cliff everybody often foolishly jump off of, you couldn't even see it. So, a lot of water flowing, and obviously, in a roundabout way, all this water flowing is really drawing a lot of attention to the falls. I've driven by a couple times, and there's lots of people up there watching. I just hope that as this rolls along, things mellow out out there a little bit. I'm ready for spring. Being this time of year, it's budget season. I mentioned that last year, and you'll have organizations and various departments and interests coming to you with budget requests. And for those that weren't here last week or didn't happen to watch on video, I requested that a small budget item be funded, and that is one evening meeting a month. It sounds like I'm beating a drum, and I am, and I'm not beating the drum because I need evening meetings. I arranged my schedule, and I can generally get here, but that's something I'd love to hear some comments about and endorsements for, and make it happen. The other thing I wanted to mention was in regards to comments last week. Transportation is the number one concern, not issue, but concern, for the citizens in the county right now. That's been proven in the last two surveys, and it's certainly proven if you're like me or yourselves, where you're out there and you talk with the public. And there's an underlying theme that folks are frustrated, they feel like they're being taxed, told, feed, and then taxed again for transportation, and yet, too much of the money's going to everything but actually increasing capacity and maintaining roads. Obviously, the gas tax for the county and for your local city is going to bring millions in every year, and hopefully it'll be spent carefully. But that genuine message from the people out there, regardless of their party, whether they own a business, is pretty strong, and that is there's a rising frustration. And I don't expect the county to solve it all, but I do expect the county to take a stronger message to Metro, who authorizes all of the environmental studies and the regional planning. I don't feel that Metro's really in touch with Clackamas County. In fact, that's a discussion we should save for another time. I get that feeling often that Metro's actually running the county, and I think others do too. And that's my message today. My message today is, let's start talking to Metro about our transportation dollars. Let's figure out how we're going to fix the roads and increase capacity, and do some things with existing money. It's a big haul, isn't it? I appreciate it, as always.
Thank you. Paul.
I just want to say, stick around for my comments. Later on at the meeting, I'll be speaking of that very issue.
All right. Thank you, and that was our last citizen communications, and we're moving on to two public hearings. And I'll ask Administrator to introduce them.
Yes. Commissioners, the first public hearing today is on the Proposed Housing and Community Development 2019 Action Plan. Chuck Robbins from Community Development will present.
Almost fell over.
Oh, no.
That would have been normal for me.
Is this the attack chair from the director?
So, Chair Bernard, Commissioners.
Chair Bernard, thank you very much for having me here today. My name's Chuck Robbins. I'm the Director of the Community Development Division, and this is our annual public hearing. I've got a couple things that I need to go through as part of a kind of a pro forma that HUD requires us to touch bases on, and I would like to open it up for some testimony. I know that we have some people here. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge two of my staff. Kevin Ko, he's the Manager of Community Development, and Mark Suroy, he's one of our project coordinators. They're really responsible for putting together this action plan, which is actually our application to HUD for our federal funding and making sure that we meet all of their guidelines. So, couldn't get done if they weren't here doing their work. So, the public hearing. We've got three elements to this. We've got a review of last year's performance of the Community Development Block Grant, the Home and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, a review of the Proposed 2019 Housing and Community Development Action Plan. It's an opportunity for citizens to testify in the plan or the county's housing and community development needs. Also, it's important for me to say that there is no board action that needs to be taken today. We have the plan out for public comment. That ends on April 30th, and we will take public comments and any other board action, incorporate that into the plan, and bring this plan back to the Board for approval at their May 2nd meeting. So, let me just kind of quickly talk about our program. As I said, we are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We're an entitlement community. That means that based on a formula, the county receives money annually in the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Program, and the ESG Program. One of the key components of the formula is population. So, we could not get the amount of money that the county gets if we didn't have a terrific working relationship with the other jurisdictions in the county. Every three years, we enter into an intergovernmental agreement with our cities. They allow us to use their population in our calculation, which means that we receive more money every year. So, it's a terrific working relationship that we have with our cities. Something that's a little unusual about Clackamas County is we do not allocate, or at least we do not advertise, our funds annually. We put together a multi-year funding plan. We are currently in the third year of our three-year plan. We will begin taking applications around November of this year for a two-year plan, which would begin in July, one of 2020. Now, we do that for a number of reasons. The biggest is that it gives us flexibility if we have projects that stall so that we can move them and get our funds out in a quicker manner. It also allows cities and other agencies an opportunity to generate the matching requirement funds that we have with all of our grants. So, let's just talk about past performance. Community Development Block Grant, that's our largest grant. This is generally used for infrastructure, public facilities, public services, and housing rehabilitation. I think last year, we funded about $2.5 million in CDBG funds or projects throughout the county. This was about $1 million of the CDBG money, $800,000 of program income. So, this is money that is generated by investing community development in loans, generally housing rehabilitation loans, which get repaid when homes are sold. And then we also leveraged, I think I'd mentioned the match that we required, we leveraged about $700,000 of local match. So, just a couple of projects to mention, we completed Fenton Avenue in Malala and Shefford Road in Estacada. We also finished about 51 housing rehabilitation loans this year. The Home Program is specifically for the construction of affordable housing or rehabilitation of affordable housing. We expended about $400,000 last year, which leveraged almost $9 million of other local funds. Generally, those are grants and loans that come through the state. We've got one project that is looking to be completed this year, and that is the River Glen Apartments in Gladstone. These are 440, or excuse me, 44 rehabilitated units. Also, and you're going to see this in our performance measures this year, we've expanded the performance measures to not just focus on units completed, but also look the fact that it may take us three to five years to complete a unit, but there's a lot of work that gets done in those three years. So, we've broken it out into pre-development, under-construction, and completed. So, in those three categories, we currently have about 356 new units in our pipeline that will come online in the next year or two years. The last grant that we have is the Emergency Solutions Grant, the ESG Grant. This is primarily for homeless services. It's about $180,000. 60% of that money gets used to fund the operation of four different homeless shelters in Clackamas County. So, that's the Annie Ross House, which is our homeless families. It's currently under construction, and it's owned by Northwest Housing Alternatives, and it's supposed to be reopening here in the end of August. We have the Clackamas Women's Services, which is our domestic violence shelter, Casa Esperanza, which is our culturally specific Latina DV shelter operated by Northwest Family Services, and the Spring Water Group Home, which is a shelter for homeless youth. So, that is how we expended our funds last year. This year, you've got a copy of the three-year funding plan, and it kind of shows you how we expect to fund those. One thing that's, it's becoming more of the norm over the last couple of years, is that we do not know exactly how much CDBG Home or ESG funds we're going to receive this year, because it took so long for the federal government to approve their budget. What we do know, though, is how much has been allocated to each of those programs. So, based upon that, we're making an assumption that for the CDBG program, we're looking at about $2 million again this year, which would be flat funding. For the Home Program, we're looking at maybe $970,000, which would be about an 8% decrease in funding. And for the Emergency Solutions Grant, we're looking at about $178,000, which is about 1% decrease. So, for the most part, you know, things are pretty stable. Hopefully, we will know here, you know, in the next couple, three weeks, exactly what those dollar amounts are. So, that's all I really had to say, and I really wanted to open it up for any comments or questions.
I think you guys tied on that, so I'm going to go with Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Chuck, and for all the materials. They're so easy to follow, so easy to read. I so appreciate the work and all that we do comprehensively to help families. Just one question. There, you have suppressed as a category on some of these, on emergency solutions. You have the Clackamas Women's Services Emergency Shelter. What does that mean?
Well, generally, when we use suppressed, that means we're not telling you where it's located.
Got it.
So, it's the location of the facility. So, it's, you know, this says Los Niños Casa Hogar Shelter. That is now Casa Esperanza.
Yes.
And the other one, I think, is, you know, the.
That is totally fine. I just wasn't sure if it was, the suppress meant something to do with the funding, if we were holding it, or what that meant. So, thank you very much.
Ken.
A couple of things. First, in your executive summary, your community outreach, I thought, was outstanding. 10 meetings, over 350 people responding to, or 310 people responding to the survey, all of it. I just thought you did an outstanding job in making sure that the community was involved in the process. Did have some questions on page 34. Goal outcome indicator, first one, and obviously the second one. Just, my question is, is that what you have accomplished or what you intend to accomplish? It was a little unclear to me as to what that actually meant.
So, those are our goals.
So, what you intend to accomplish?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if it was an actual or a goal, so I wanted to be sure.
And because this is reflecting, this plan is what we're going to be doing in the future, which is why it's just a goal.
Okay. And then on page 35, developing new housing units, number seven, CDBG, $50. The next three, each one of them's only $50?
You know, I'm tight, but I'm not that tight. Thank you, that's a typo.
Okay, what should it be?
I'm going to guess AFH, develop new funding, you know, I can't tell you at the top of my head. I'm going to have to go look that up.
After the meeting, give me a chance, just give me a call, let me know.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Must be $50 million on each of them.
And don't we wish?
All right. With that, I will open the public hearing, and I have four folks I'd like to testify. A little trouble reading some of these names. Destin and Angela. Angela's easy. I think it's Mullins.
Yes, yeah.
Farren.
It's Destin Friedan. It is a very unusual name.
Thanks for that.
All right. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Destin Friedan. I live at 2812 Northeast Stanton in Portland, Oregon. I am the proud new Director of Housing Development at Northwest Housing Alternatives. I've only been in the job a couple of weeks. I'll try to speak to some of these subjects as best I can. Northwest Housing Alternatives creates opportunities for very low and extremely low-income families through the provision of quality, affordable, and attainable housing and resident services. NHA works throughout the state and has its heart in offices right here in Clackamas County. Clackamas County Home and CDBG resources have been crucial in supporting NHA's mission and currently are represented in three different projects in Clackamas County. The NHA campus includes 28 new homes for families and seven project-based rental assistance homes, which mean that the tenants pay no more than 30% of their income in rent. This has also eight shelter apartments, the Annie Ross House in its new state, for people coming out of homelessness. It is slated for construction completion in August of 2019. The Pleasant Avenue Project, which provides 24 new homes for veterans, and is all project-based rental assistance, meaning they don't have to pay more than 30% of their income in rent. And it is scheduled to be construction complete in November of 2019. And then finally, the River Glen Project, which was mentioned by Chuck, which includes 44 rehabilitated homes for families, including 34 project-based rental assistance units, and currently houses 100 residents, including 25 children. It is also slated to be construction complete in November of 2019. I thank you for your continued support of housing that is affordable to the diverse communities of the Clackamas County and that provides opportunities for stabilization and advancement of our citizens.
Thank you. I want to mention one thing, that your contractor, I hear nothing but positive things about the contractor and how they work with the community, if there's any changes, they have community meetings. I mean, it sounds like you really made a great choice on your contractor.
Yes, we did. We choose them carefully.
Yes. Ken.
This is a general question. So, you do housing rehabilitation plans, and I caught part of what Chuck said, but I wasn't sure if this was universal in these housing rehabilitation plans, but do you recoup all of that money back by the sale of the property in the future, or is there some that you don't recoup back? How does that work exactly?
Okay, so we're really talking two different things here. When I'm talking about program income that's generated through housing rehabilitation, we're talking about single-family owner-occupied units. So, we, excuse me, we provide a deferred payment loan to these units, and if the property sells, they move or something, we get repaid. Dustin is talking about large-scale multifamily rehabilitation, and that's just a grant that we provide.
And we will hold those homes for forever.
I'm sorry?
We will hold those homes for forever, make sure that they're available to low-income tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Paul. Just want to just say really thank you for everything that Northwest Housing Alternatives does. You guys have really made a significant impact and are making significant investments in the county and in the region, so I just want to acknowledge your good work, and it's really nice to see that we're building more capacity, so thank you.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm here representing Home Base and the Annie Ross House. I'm Angela Mullins, and I live in the Kanema District of Clackamas County. Our funding for, you know, Annie Ross Houses, I think, went down August of 2017 is when we closed, and so Home Base has been up and running since that time, continuing to provide services. And I wanted to bring kind of a report of where your money went last year and how it was used, and so that's the report I provided. In 2018, Home Base served 285 households, which is quite significant for us. 66% of those households were households with kids. Those households received both prevention services and rapid rehousing services. 34% of the families or individuals were served identified as having a disability. There were 18 veterans that were served. 45% of the households served were impacted by domestic violence, and 22% of those 45 were actually fleeing domestic violence. For the folks that actually left the program in 2018, 75% went into permanent housing. Of the adults that came into the program with income or with no income, we had 71% of those adults that retained or increased their income at exit of the program. If they had income at entry, by the time they exited, there was an average increase of $1,300. And if there was no income at intake, by exit, there was an average gain of about $2,000 a month coming in. I provided kind of some demographics and then the retention numbers for the permanent placement when we were putting people into housing. After six months, we were able to find that 91% of our households were still housed at six months, and at 12 months, there was 87% were continued to be housed. And for our eviction efforts, eviction prevention efforts, at six months, there was 88% that remained housed, and at 12 months, there was 75% housed. So, I just wanted to share with you the different funding streams that we receive from, that you approve of each year and some of the work. We don't always get that opportunity to share that, you know, kind of on-the-ground outcomes to you, and I wanted to share that. Annie Ross House is going to be up and running here this summer, I think, two or three months sooner than we anticipated, but we're really excited. I know that we have August or May 22nd, we have a tour scheduled and invited folks to come and tour the campus. It's pretty mind-blowingly beautiful. The new shelter is just going to be amazing. I've always been very proud of the work that NHA does when it comes to housing, but to be able to welcome new families into that facility, I'm just really excited about that. We provide not only the operations of the shelter, but the services that go into getting them into housing, and then that stabilization piece, and so those are three elements that we are requiring funding to support, and we really appreciate the support you've always given us and continue to provide as we look forward. So, thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. Ken.
Your six-month and one-year statistics are impressive.
Thank you.
That's unusual, quite frankly. I do have a question about the ones that fall through the cracks, that don't succeed. What are some of the reasons that that happens?
If the housing's too expensive.
Just pointing to.
Yeah. Trying to help folks gain income that is able to afford those rates is a big, so we are able to provide a subsidy for a certain amount of time, and it's not concrete, like three months and you're done. But we try to work with them every three months, assessing kind of, are we making steps towards that self-sufficiency? So, right now, it's that having a lack of either education to obtain work that can afford those rents.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Martha, Sonia.
Thank you. So, just a question. It's somewhat easier to comprehend how you provide the services. When the Annie Ross House was there, people go, they get the services on site, and then you would transition them as quickly as possible to permanent housing. Without Annie Ross, how have you filled the gap? If you could just give us maybe a pathway through of how you've helped a family without sort of having that home base, it's pretty remarkable.
I think that it was a learning process at first, not realizing that lack of access to the families and kind of trying to figure that out. But I have been working with the CHA, with the Coordinated Housing Access System, since it started, and as we have tightened the efficiency of how it works and being able, so, I mean, we always knew that maybe 82% of the families that came into the Annie Ross were couch-serving. So, to be able to get those phone calls and having that connection with CHA, they let us know, we've got a family that's literally homeless. They send us over the number, we look them up, we make an appointment, we go either out to them or they come to us. So, it's that connection that we have with the Coordinated Housing Access Line to be able to connect to folks.
That's great.
We also have a SUN Network, which is a sheltering our neighbors, which is like five different churches that has been in operation for 10 years, and they take a couple of families in during those colder, wetter months, and we start providing them to case management as soon as possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Martha.
Yeah, why don't you go back to the question about the affordability and people being unable to afford it because, you know, job-related issues. Do you do any direct work or contact with, like, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, Community Solutions, our community college, because that's the nexus of where those folks actually can get the step up to actually get a job?
You bet.
And so, do you work with them pretty frequently?
We don't have close partnerships at this time. I think it's our next step in growing, so being able to connect. I mean, we've, at different times, been in contact and have gotten updates to certain grants they have this year and who they're able to serve, and it changes just like we do. We need to tighten our partnerships, we open up the Annie Ross House back up.
Okay, yeah, I would suggest that, because I know that Gladstone, for example, with their early childhood learning hub there, they also offer, and a lot of times, you know, you have issues because of houselessness and not affording that, they actually have workforce services directly available at that hub, and if you can somehow integrate that into your, yeah, it's just a suggestion. I serve on the workforce board, so when you said that, I thought, well, we need to know that so we can make sure that, and that when we apply for grants, that, or applying for grants, that will help the demographic that you're working with as well, so.
Definitely. You know, I mean, we will hold their hand and take them down there in order to make that connection, and just having more resources available for them to be able to access those resources.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul. Maybe, this might be a question for maybe something offline, but maybe. Maybe, this might be a question for maybe something offline, but maybe quickly you can help me with the affordability issue, but on a different tangent here. That is that, in some of your older existing housing that you provide, I'm sure you guys keep the rents, the affordability, as low as possible. You came in there with a certain business model, you know what the rents had to be to make your bottom line.
Yeah.
So, as you probably bring facilities online, that minimum rent to get in is probably going up and up and up. Do you have any kind of a figure percentage-wise on that increase?
I don't. You know, those housing units that we bring online are available for the community, and so it's rare that my program is actually able to get folks into those units directly. We're excited that there's going to be specific units at the new campus that is designated for families in the shelter, but because they're always full, no one's moving, everybody appreciates those low rents, it's hard to find openings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks. Ann Wilkinson and Amy Hamilton. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, got it. Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Amy Hamilton. I'm going to try to speak up. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. I'm the Assistant Director of Asset Building Programs with Nedco, and really, I'm just here today to share some excitement we have about a program we're getting ready to kick off with your help, and thank you for supporting us in this mission. Nedco has long been committed to helping working-class families and middle-class families achieve the dream of owning their first home. But as you all know, that's getting harder every single year in Oregon. We provide education and counseling for aspiring first-time homebuyers, and we have tools like down payment assistance and match savings, individual development accounts, to help them. But we're finding that a lot of families just can't find a home anywhere near the price range that they can actually afford. They have stable income, good credit, they make in all of our classes, the barrier truly is a lack of affordable homes. So, in true Nedco fashion, we've started developing our own homes to meet this need, using a new state funding source called LIFT, or Local Innovation Fast Track. LIFT helps us subsidize the development of new, excuse me, units for homeownership by families below eighty percent of the AMI, using a model called Community Land Trust Homes. In a land trust, the land is legally divided from the home, and the land is held in trust by Nedco, and the homes are sold to low-to-moder income families. In exchange, when that buyer sells the home in the future, they agree to sell to another low-income family. This means that the home is an asset to the community, and it's affordable entry-level home for the next family, and on and on. We're using the LIFT funding to build cottage cluster communities right now in Lane County. We have two projects that are getting ready to break ground, one, two, and three-bedroom homes from about six hundred to twelve hundred square feet clustered around a common green space. Are they... Oh, sorry, I just said that they're breaking ground in Lane County, but we're looking forward to our next project, which is going to be here in Clackamas County. We're going to be using the CBDG funds, we were awarded two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, thank you very much, to help us acquire a parcel of land, and then we will apply for LIFT funds to help offset the other development costs. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to coming back with updates as we have them.
Thank you very much.
I do have one question. The facility in Eugene you built, what was the name of it?
Well, it hasn't broken ground yet, so there's no name at this time. We do have a... Yeah, I think I might know what you're referring to, but those two, there's one, and they're in Lane County, one is in Cottage Grove, and one is in the place that has all the sand dunes, Florence, in Florence. I never can remember that name.
You said Lane County, that's correct. I said Eugene, so you're right.
Yes, but we have a youth-age United Foster Care property in Eugene, and that might be what you're thinking of. That one's called the Polk Street Project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Ann Wilkinson, and I'm representing Next Step Strategies and the We Built Community that we started on 8909 Southeast Tolbert Road. Mary's going to pass out a little before-and-after picture. We were able to get a block grant to help us create the road that goes to that community. It's an intentional community for adults who experience autism, and it's an integrated community, so we'll have some opportunity for other people who are not experiencing autism to live there as well. We've created a community where we're really sensitive to the sensory needs of these particular individuals. We raised the windows, so if individuals didn't want to wear clothing, they still have their privacy. We did excessive soundproofing between the units. We made sure that there was no sound that transfers from one half of the duplex to the other. There's a trampoline in the floor that you can just walk on and just bounce for a few minutes. There's an I-beam across the living room, so you can swing all day if that's what you need to do, or lay in a hammock. There's opportunity to have a tub as big as you are so that you can float, just really looking at specifically the needs of these individuals with autism who are not able to access and be successful in typical housing for them. My own son sort of got us started in that, and our board is made up of special educators who have worked with kids who weren't going to make it into the regular population and be able to access typical systems. We built this intentionally as a model so that there are other groups of people who may find that it's applicable to them as well. It's self-sustaining once we're complete, and we're building it with an all-edible landscape. We've just completed a project that Wes helped us do, and put fifty espalier trees, fruit trees, around the perimeter of the building so that we can grow fruit on the sides of all, because we raised our windows, we have these great vertical surfaces that we can put, we can grow food up the side of each of the buildings. So that creates for us a job and a fun activity, if you want to be a gardener, or learn how to be a permaculturist, and have folks come and learn from our guys right on-site. So the front side is the picture, and the backside is the dream.
Great. Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, thank you for being here today and for all the work you do, actually helping with the inventory of homes. I actually had a question, a couple of questions for Nedco, and I just wanted to make sure it's Dancer Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation.
Correct.
So you also help micro businesses, you also do that kind of work, as well as help people find housing?
That is correct, yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Okay, so there's also a jobs component there, and there's an economic development component. So again, have you had any partnerships with our workforce folks? And have you had any partnerships with the county piece of workforce, which is Community Solutions? We also have an economic development department that helps businesses locate and grow. Have you ever had any kind of a connection with them, or talked to them about that?
We've had some initial conversations with some people from the Clackamas Workforce Partnership. David Green, I think he was on the board a bit ago, we've talked with him quite a bit. We work with them at Citizens Bank for our IDA program, and so that's a short connection there. But we're definitely looking to grow that partnership, mostly when it comes to these homes that we're building. You know, there's a financial education piece, and there's all sorts of things that go with it, but we have this amazing IDA program that ties in really well to the workforce partnership, which is match savings to help people become more stable. It can be used for homeownership, which is part of what we would be using for, but when it comes to the things you're talking about, there's money that can be used to help get certificates to be able to be more employable, right? So it's not just higher education like college, it could be certificate programs.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
And rental IDAs, rental deposit IDAs, to help people get into stable housing so that they can actually work here in the county. So that's a lot of work that we'd like to do with the work partnership more.
And you're a national organization, are you not?
No, we're not, just here in Oregon.
Oh, okay. My other last question is, okay, so I did the workforce piece, so do you ever partner with Proud Ground, which is, I'm going to be meeting with Diane Lynn on Friday?
Yes, we work really closely with Proud Ground. One of their staff used to work for Nedco, in fact, and so we're closely connected with them. And they do a lot of that land trust housing, and so in our preparation to do that with these monies, we've worked with them a lot to figure out what's working well and what's not, so we can do it great from the start.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. With that, I will close the public hearing and announce that there is no board action on this item today. It'll come back before the board at a May 2nd, 2019 business meeting for board action. And we'll move on to the next public hearing.
Ashley, before Chuck, before you go, so Commissioners, as you may recall, Chuck will be retiring this year after a distinguished career at Clackamas County. While he's not retiring yet, this will be his last presentation of the annual work plan for community development.
Good job.
Thank you, Chuck.
I guess, just let me add, what a pleasure it's been to work with you. I was going to sit down and count how many Commissioners I've presented in front of, and the number just got more than I could get on both hands. So, but again, this is, you know, you stay because it's a great place, and I, that's why I stayed. This has been a terrific place to work, and you have just provided exactly the kind of leadership that the county needs, and you have always supported our block grant program, which we really, really appreciate. So thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Chuck, for all the help you've given us, yeah.
And not just here, but on the national level.
Yeah.
Appreciate all your hard work.
So Commissioners, our next second public hearing is a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reduction for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Krista Wolf from Finance will present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to be here again. For the record, Krista Bosserman-Wolff, Director of Finance. So I am here today for more of a clerical item, not perhaps as quite as exciting as what Chuck was sharing. So, today from our Budget Office, we have several budget adjustments on our consent agenda today, but also we have one adjustment that does require public notice and a public hearing. So as you know, we've completed closing out the financial operations for the former city of Damascus, and our office is requesting that the board would approve a supplemental budget of greater than ten percent for the Damascus Successor Fund. We're reducing the materials and services by one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and budgeting this amount in interfund spending. This amount is representative of the balance of the unclaimed funds that will be returned to the county's general fund. This budget adjustment will allow the Finance Department to then transfer the funds and close out our Damascus Successor Fund. Essentially, we're completing the process, if you will. The required public notice for the change was published on April 3rd in the Clackamas Review, the Oregon City News, and the Estacada News. And so unless there are any further questions with that, I would respectfully request that the BCC would approve the supplemental budget as presented.
I'd like to claim those funds. Oh, you have to live in Damascus.
There were some requirements, I believe.
All right, Paul?
I don't have a question on this particular item, but I do have a question on the process. So in regards to the sightings in the CAFR, essentially, had they been done at this particular time a year ago, we would not have had those. Is that about right? Is that a fair overall statement?
I'm not sure I'm following exactly what the question is. Perhaps you can expand a little bit more.
We had a few expenditures over the budget that were cited in the CAFR.
This supplemental...
The audit, the audit, I'm sorry.
Correct. So this supplemental budget does not have anything to do with those over expenditures reported in the CAFR.
Right, but had they been foreseen, would it have been included in a process like this?
That's a good question. If they had been anticipated earlier, then most likely we would have done a budget adjustment, whether a budget adjustment that goes on a consent agenda or a supplemental process that involves a public hearing and public notice.
Okay, that's my point, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and we'll open, let me see, do I need to open, yes, open a public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reductions for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reductions for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Now, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then I'll announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health for the next item. And Gary, what is the next item?
Yes, first is a presentation on emerging public health issues in Clackamas County, declining vaccination coverage. Dr. Sarah Present and Julie Albers from Public Health will present.
Good morning, Chair Bernard. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for having us here this morning.
I'm Julie Albers, Assistant Director of Public Health. Good morning, thanks for having us.
And I am Dr. Sarah Present, Public Health Officer for Clackamas County. We are excited to be here for the second meeting officially as the Board of Health. There are a number of exciting things happening in public health, including our successful Public Health Week last week with a really great presentation and event. Thank you for all of your support with that. We want to take our time with you today to talk about an issue that is one of always, that is always of public health interest, is the vaccination status and vaccine-preventable disease status in our community. We have a number of things happening around vaccinations right now that we'll talk about later in the presentation, one of which is a public health impact paper around the declining vaccination coverage in Clackamas County that's going to be published, I believe, within the next week. So I want to talk about some of the things we're doing, some of the things where you've heard, and ensure that you guys have all the information and get your questions answered about vaccines and vaccine-preventable diseases right now. It's really quite a timely topic. So vaccine information and misinformation are prevalent in the news. I think we've all heard a lot about measles recently, given the recent measles outbreak in Washington State over in Clark County, the few measles cases that we've had here in the Portland Tri-County area, as well as the emergency declaration around measles that just recently happened in Brooklyn, New York. There are a lot of reasons that measles in particular is in the news, and there are a lot of reasons that vaccine-preventable diseases are actually on the rise. So historically, this is a really interesting time, I believe, in that in the 20th century, the introduction of vaccines to control infectious diseases was one of the, was really one of the top major public health successes. We have, vaccines shifted a lot of our public health history into having communicable and infectious diseases being one of the leading causes of disability and death, to really more state where we are now, where chronic diseases are more of the top causes of disability and death. We also know that we are having decreased numbers of these diseases and decreased numbers of people seeing these diseases, and so our understanding of what these diseases are and what the importance of vaccines are in our community has really shifted. This has, I believe, led to an opening for lack of knowledge, potential misinformation, and not necessarily getting all the information that we all need in order to maintain the health and safety of our community. The World Health Organization has recently listed vaccine hesitancy as one of the top ten global health threats at our time. So this is not just in Clackamas County or our country, but it's really something that we are concerned about as a major reemerging issue around the world. So today, what I really want to do is to give you some science-based information on immunizations and talk about the current state of vaccinations and vaccine-preventable diseases here in Clackamas County. So talking a little bit more about the resurgence of these vaccine-preventable diseases. In the first quarter of 2019, we've had three-hundred-and-eighty-seven individual cases of measles in fifteen states. This is the second-greatest number of cases reported in the United States since measles was eliminated in 2000 and greater than all of the cases in 2018. So when we talk about measles elimination, I just want to be clear that that means that we do not, that the cases of measles are imported from other countries. So we don't have continued spread of measles in the United States at this time. So all of the outbreaks that we have can be traced to an imported case at some point. My big concern right now is that we're a state that this might reverse, and we might, there are certain communities, at least within our country and within our state, where ongoing transmission is a risk that we are hoping to prevent. One-fifth of the measles cases this year have occurred in the Pacific Northwest. Eighty-four people, primarily children in Washington and Oregon, have contracted the And just another statement on measles, like I said, we do have imported cases... And just another statement on measles, like I said, we do have imported cases, you know, we have a smattering of measles in Oregon every year. Most of the time, we don't hear about it because of the work that public health does to control the spread of it, which is, we have lots of very clear protocols and policies around it to help protect the communities, and because the majority of people are vaccinated. So when people are vaccinated, the diseases cannot spread extensively. Luckily, most people are vaccinated, and luckily, we don't have outbreaks all the time. And so the few cases of measles and other vaccine preventable diseases that we have are more easily controllable. This is what I would like to keep us working to maintain. Again, I am concerned because of the declining rates of vaccination coverage in our country, in our state, and in our county. And I'll give you some more data about that in a minute. Suboptimal immunization levels have introduced a number of infectious diseases back into our communities. So we hear about measles because that's kind of what's most in our news right now, but there are a number of other diseases in the last couple of years that have had a resurgence that is unusual. I believe it was about two years ago, we had a number of outbreaks of mumps that is similar, similar causes of decreased vaccination. The reasons of that there are declining vaccination rates are really complex. But we do know that Clackamas County really needs to increase our vaccination rates in order to protect our vulnerable groups and prevent infectious disease outbreaks. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about reasons in just a minute. So the facts, I can tell you 100% that vaccines are safe and that vaccines are effective, and that vaccines save millions of lives every year. They work best when at least 95% of the population is immunized. And if we stop vaccinating, or if we decrease below that threshold, we will start seeing diseases returning, which we are already. I wanted to bring your attention to the pictures at the top of this slide. So this talks about what we call community immunity. So if, on the left-hand side, you have a number of people who are healthy people who are not vaccinated, you have a few people who are vaccinated, and then you have one sick person who comes into that, and you can see that the majority of the non-vaccinated people will get that infection and become ill. On the right-hand side, you have, the majority are healthy and vaccinated. You do have a few who are healthy and non-vaccinated. But in that situation, when the non-vaccinated sick person comes in, some of the unvaccinated will get ill. The majority are vaccinated, therefore, the disease does not spread. So there's really a threshold where we know that there are some people in our community who cannot get vaccines. There are medical reasons to not get vaccines. And in order to protect them, we need to have everybody around them be vaccinated so that the disease cannot spread throughout the community. So I do want to spend some time talking about potential side effects and potential concerns about vaccinations, so that you can be, have the best information on it. If you look at the top of the slide, it says, "No high-quality scientific evidence has linked any vaccine or vaccine ingredient to autism spectrum disorder." So I believe that we are all aware that the link between vaccines and autisms is one that is still talked about in our community, on social media, in various realms, but it is not true. The science around that, that brought that into a possibility, is fraudulent. It has been debunked. The person who performed that original study that brought that out has actually lost his license and gone to prison. There are a number of continued scientific, there are a continued number of individuals who make these claims, and I just want to assure you that the science around that is not, is not good science. But there are a number of other reasons that people are concerned about vaccines or about side effects. So vaccines are only licensed when the frequency of severe reactions is very rare, and when only minor self-limiting reactions are reported. Minor reactions usually occur within a few hours of injections and resolve short period of time later and pose little danger. So if you see some status on, or some numbers on the number of bad reactions to vaccines, I can tell you the majority of people have a reaction to a vaccine. I think anytime we've gotten a flu shot or a tetanus shot, it's, our arm is sore, right? So that's considered an adverse reaction. So if you look at numbers of adverse reactions, realize that, yes, soreness is something that we can expect. The adverse reactions of actually getting the disease are far greater a risk, far more serious risks, and far more, the complications of the diseases that the vaccines prevent are much more common than complications of the vaccines themselves. Another, another thing that I hear a lot specifically around the flu shot, so the flu is not a live virus. There's no scientific way that can infect people, but people think that, "I don't get the flu shot because I got it one time and it gave me the flu." So vaccines cause an immune response in the body. An immune response, and that's what they're supposed to do. And a healthy immune response sometimes can cause a low-grade fever. Sometimes it can cause some muscle aches. That is a reaction that the body has to the immune system working. So sometimes people will feel a little bit of malaise and fatigue, possibly a low-grade fever, and that actually can be normal and not a bad thing. It's a sign that the immune system is working. And so they, some people can be confused around that. When I, just one more story about this. When I talk to my patients about concerns around vaccines and the safety of vaccines, I like to talk about when I was pregnant and deciding on the vaccination, on what I was going to do around my own daughter's vaccinations. When I was in medical school, I had an allergy professor who talked to me about how she thought the vaccination schedule in the United States just wasn't very healthy for the majority of the people. She thought that the number of vaccines that we give at a time potentially increases patients' or children's risks of allergy and asthma. And so that stuck in my head. She was a reputable source to me that I thought, you know, in my mind, when I had a child, I was going to space out the vaccines so I could decrease her chance of having allergy and asthma. However, when I was pregnant, it was, you know, five, six years later, and I thought, "I wonder what the actual science around this is now. Has anything changed?" And so I went to research the original science myself and found that that claim that my professor in medical school had made was not true. There was no science behind that. I'm not sure where she got that. That was her opinion that she imparted on me, and I did believe it. When I did the research myself, I found that there was no association with combining vaccines and increased allergy and asthma. And in fact, there was a trend towards decreased allergy and asthma with the current vaccination schedule the way it was. So I was really happy to go ahead and choose to use the standard vaccination schedule for my daughter. But it was really eye-opening to me at how easy it is to get misinformation and miscommunication from trusted sources. All right, so on to Clackamas County. When we look at early childhood vaccination rates, the slide that you see here is the percent of two-year-old children up to date on vaccinations in Clackamas in Oregon and the United States. You can see that we have actually done, we've improved since 2014 to 2017. Clackamas ranks a little bit above all the state of Oregon, but still below the national level. 2017, our overall two-year-old full vaccination rate was 69%. Now, if you remember on that earlier slide, I stated that we need to have 95% vaccination coverage to prevent the spread of vaccine preventable diseases in our community. So I'm happy to see that this has gone up, but it's still below that threshold that we really see as safety. Here, this is the percent of kindergarteners who are fully vaccinated in Oregon and in Clackamas County. I believe that we've all heard on the news recently that Oregon is among, one of the lowest states in kindergarten vaccination rates. And you can see that Clackamas is actually below the national, excuse me, the state average in our kindergarten vaccination rates. So there are a couple of things I wanted to bring up here. There is a big increase between the two-year-old vaccinations and the kindergarten vaccinations. Although the kindergarten is decreasing, you still see that we are here at 91% at this point. So that's a nice increase from 60, whatever, to 90. And that increase is because there is the school law. When children go into kindergarten, they have to, their parents have to show their immunization records. And Julie will talk a little bit more about school law and what we do around it there. But we are concerned that the low rates of the two-year-old vaccinations has to do with people's access to vaccines that are affordable and easy to, easy to access. So that's one thing that public health really wants to ensure that we're looking at, is this decline. So we have done a lot with Affordable Care Act and various ways to help ensure increased access for our, for our two-year-olds, but we still have a lot of work to do there. And then I believe the decrease in the kindergartners who are fully vaccinated, this decrease is pretty much 100% due to the non-medical exemptions. So there are always medical exemptions that Julie will talk about a little bit more, but there are increasing non-medical exemptions for a number of the reasons that I just discussed and a number of the concerns. So I'm going to actually pass this over to Julie to talk a little bit more about school law and what public health does.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So as Dr. Present mentioned, that is the law that children that attend school or certified daycares in Oregon be up to date on certain immunizations. Those laws exist to keep those children who can't be immunized safe and healthy. And a minority of states allow exemptions, including Oregon, to that law for personal belief or philosophical belief about exemption. So there are 16 states that allow, as of last fall, there were 16 states that allow this personal exemption to vaccinations. There are three states that allow a religious, that do not allow a religious exemption, and all states allow a medical exemption. Which button? I don't want to do that.
I'll do it.
Thank you. So what is an exemption? A child can have a medical exemption because they can't be vaccinated, usually some sort of immunity disorder, cancer treatment, or something in that makes vaccinations contraindicated. But a non-medical exemption is a request to have a child excluded for personal or philosophical beliefs. So what does the exemption rate look like in Clackamas County? The red or the warm colors, the red, orange, and yellow are higher exemption rates. Those greens and blue colors are the lower exemption rates. And remember that 95% of children vaccinated is what we need to establish that community immunity. So in this case, all of the blue and the green are in that safe zone where they have 95% or more of their children vaccinated. And the yellow, orange, and red have non-medical exemptions that mean they exceed that, or fall below that rate of 95%. So that would be Oregon City Malala in the red, the Cambie area in the orange, Colton in the yellow, and Wilsonville in the yellow, and then on up to North Clackamas also in the orange. So in many areas of the country, it's the rural areas that lag behind. In Clackamas County, it appears to be the opposite. So Oregon has one of the highest non-medical exemption rates among kindergartners in the country. 9% of our kindergartners have at least one exemption. 6% of our students have one or more exemptions. And 3, 3.5% of our students have no immunizations, are completely unvaccinated. So what is school exclusion? Every year in January, we begin the exclusion process. All of the schools, charter schools, daycares, submit reports to our immunization team to verify the immunization status of all of the children in attendance at their facility. And then we review those records and send out exclusion notices or letters to those families regarding their school exclusion. So if they're not immunized or opting into a non-medical exemption by the exclusion date, then they're no longer allowed to attend school. And then we do some follow-up after that date as those kids get their non-medical exemptions or get their vaccinations and return to school. This year, we issued 1,773 school exclusion letters, which was actually down from last year, and we believe that's the benefit of having exclusion fall in the middle of a measles outbreak, so that gains some attention. So what else is public health doing about the immunization rate? Our access to care team is where the immunization program lives, but that's also where our WIC program is. The WIC staff screen and refer every child under two for immunization. So they review those two-year-old immunization requirements and make referrals to places where they can get those caught up. Our environmental health team inspects facilities and ensures that they are clean and sanitary and safe for food consumption or pools and spas. Our infectious disease control team follows up on any reported case of an infectious disease that's required to be reported in Oregon. So measles, for example, just because there's a measles case in another county, we still may be impacted if that measles case had contact with Clackamas citizens, we're following up with what is their vaccination status and appropriately quarantining them if they're not vaccinated. And then our public health advancement team operates our emergency preparedness. So if there were a large-scale outbreak, we would activate our emergency preparedness and do community vaccination or prophylaxis. And our population health strategy team is ensuring that community residents have a safe and healthy place to live and can be resilient should they be infected. So going a little deeper into our access to care immunization program, besides school exclusion, we also do surveillance on these immunization rates. We assure access to free or low-cost vaccine. There's a program called Vaccines for Children that's federally subsidized vaccination, so that children that are uninsured or underinsured or Medicaid insured have access to those vaccinations. We manage inventory of vaccine and provide those during an emergency or an outbreak. We develop health messages. And should you be interested, we develop policy around vaccine. We don't have anything in the works at this time, but this would be the team that would work with our center to develop policy if we want to do that. And finally, our last slide, as Dr. Present mentioned, we have this Public Health Impact Report coming out next week to the public on the state of vaccination. Much of the data that you've seen today will be in that report. We're also participating in a tri-county vaccine hesitancy project with HealthShare. We're now determining which populations to reach out to and doing some social marketing to those populations around the safety of vaccinations. And our immunization coordinator represents the county on the state immunization policy and advisory team. So what now? You can direct us to expand our partnerships and continue our work, to review and revise our performance Clackamas measures. It's currently an operational measure around our school law process, but we may want to revise that to look at actual vaccination rates and whether we can move that needle in Clackamas County, and then seek out our help if you are hearing from your constituents or want to do something around vaccinations in this county. So we have time for discussion, I think, or questions?
Ken?
Thank you for sharing. I realize that we don't have to take a vote on anything that's not an action item, but I-
I'm not asking you for any money or any voting or anything. Isn't that refreshing?
Appreciate that. But I did want to encourage the recommendation of pursuing partnerships as you have requested. I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, Sonia?
Yeah, one thing that became, I became aware of recently, hadn't just thought about it before, but infants can't get their immunizations until, some of them until they're older, six months old. And a young mother that I had met was just terrified to take her baby out for fear of contracting something. So it really affected their lives just knowing that this baby, little baby, was so at risk before they could get their measles vaccination.
Thank you for bringing that up. I did mention that we want to have community immunity to protect those who can't get vaccines, but that includes infants under the age of six. And for measles mumps and rubella, it's under the age of one. That is another reason that the two-year-old vaccination rate being so low is also so concerning to me. In that, so if you look at the complication rate of the measles outbreak in Clark County, I believe there was only one hospitalization, and it was not a severe hospitalization. I, we're not sure, we haven't, I know that Clark County has not reviewed all of their data about this outbreak. But if you look at measles outbreaks and measles when, before the vaccine, we had about a 10% hospitalization rate. That's currently in New York, they have about 250 cases, and they have about a 10% hospitalization rate. Currently, I believe there are five people in the ICU in the New York outbreak. So the individuals who tend to get these severe complications are also those people who tend to be the most vulnerable, who- people who tend to be the most vulnerable, who are the infants. So they are, the infants are not only not able to get vaccine, but they are the most vulnerable to the severe adverse effects of having the diseases. And so our community protecting our infants as well as our elderly, um, and there's a lot of biology around the immune system and the elderly, but elderly, um, are also kind of on the other realm of, of being, uh, the most vulnerable to severe consequences of contracting the disease. So thank you for bringing that up.
Also underscores the importance of our breastfeeding education as those, um, those young babies get some immunity from, from breastfeeding.
Yep. So, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to touch, because earlier on and just now, you mentioned the two-year-old, the rate of that. And so are there financial barriers or the, as far as cost? I mean, I know that, you know, it's an early age, don't know what, can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit? I know the public messaging might be part of that, it's for, for mothers of that age, because obviously they don't get enrolled in school till five maybe, right?
Yeah, I think it's complex about the reason. So in terms of the cost, there is, um, free vaccine available to the uninsured and underinsured, but generally they need to be established at a provider to get in and access that service. So I think provider access, knowledge about that, uh, the cost of that, uh, you know, the belief that they're going to be paying large quantities out of pocket. Not all of our providers, uh, participate in the Vaccine for Children program in the county, and that's one of the things our immunization program reaches out to those providers to try to encourage that participation. So, um, yeah, cost can be a factor, or, or knowledge of low-cost vaccines, or lack of knowledge of low-cost vaccines.
I agree. Well, I think that the message right now on the measles outbreak is, you know, on the news every day, and that's, I guess, a good thing in the sense that the word's getting out there. And if all the participants, um, can actually make it part of their regiment when a patient comes in to make sure they've been up to speed, that might help.
Yeah.
Um, is there any, is there any organization, um, association that helps make that part of their regiment, um, for members in the medical association or?
So, um, the, one of the public health monetization metrics, as well as one of the CCO metrics in Oregon, is the two-year-old vaccination rate. So, um, there are a lot of, um, a lot of things that, that medical organizations-
[coughs]
-in order to increase that. Still, I think that getting more providers to be part of the Vaccines for Children program would do a lot to improve the access to those vaccines for people in our county. Um, and then as far as, you know, there are some community organizations that are helping address misunderstandings around vaccines, but as far as making, you know, the, the policies around affordability and access, all healthcare systems and public health are, are interested. Um, and I think that just clarifying how we can really, um, improve the access in our county is something that we're continuing to work on.
I appreciate that. I was just looking to see if there are any, on my phone, if there are any state-by-state, I was trying to find a map of the state where Oregon ranked as far as autism rates, and not making that necessarily association, but that misinformation that you cited earlier on. Just wondering if we were a high state because of our numbers are so-
Right.
-poor as far as our participation in, uh, immunization, so-
Right, that is a, uh, great question, and I don't know where rank, where Oregon ranks as far as numbers of, of, um, cases of autism. Again, that is, there is no association, there is no connection between vaccines and autism. We know from recent science that autism, um, the changes in the neurodevelopment that lead to autism likely happen in utero. So before a baby's even born, there are already changes that suggest increased, um, risk of autism. We know that there are lots of factors in our environment that have been, um, increasing as the autism numbers have increased, so a lot of environmental factors. If you look at graphs of vaccine rates and autism, you can make some overlying connections, which is where a lot of this faulty science is, is resting. Uh, but you can also look at various other environmental factors, um, toxins, air pollution, and other things that all have similar graphs that, um, you could make the association in any of them. And I think that a lot of it is that we just, we don't know all the reasons that autism, um, happens. And that lack of knowledge leads to a lot of fear and a lot of, um, when something that tragic happens, people want answers. And so I think there's a lot of, um, kind of looking for things and, and it's, um, it's a challenging thing, but there's not a link between the, the vaccines and autism.
Thank you.
Martha?
Yeah, I was looking at the Healthcare Share, Health Share Oregon website, actually, as well, and they listed about 14 vaccines. And I know measles is one of the biggest ones. Are they seeing any increase in some of these other diseases because of lack of vaccination, chickenpox, diphtheria, flu, hepatitis A and B?
So, um-
influenza, mumps?
So, yes, with mumps, we've had a couple of outbreaks in the last few years. Pertussis, let's see, in, in our Public Health Impact paper here, we have a couple of these. From 24, let's see.
This is a four-year period here, four-year period in current. So pertussis in the 2009 to 2013, we had 1,100 cases. It dropped in the next four years, but already in the first quarter of this year, it's, it's slightly elevated. And then the mumps, yeah.
So I, we don't always necessarily see the numbers trending because luckily, these are still very rare after the successes of vaccinations in the 20th century. But I do believe that the number of, of outbreaks has been increasing, so the total number of cases may not, but the, the number of small outbreaks, um, and I don't have that number for you, but I can find that. Um, and then a number of these, many of these diseases like pertussis, um, and measles when it was widespread, have like a three-to-four-year kind of trend. Some of them go up and down. So if you look over a longer period of time, there's, there's more concerning small trends. You can see than on a-
You'll see a kind of quiescence going on, and then suddenly you'll have another outbreak. Is there vaccination for TB, or is that?
No.
No, there's just kind of, uh, I know, I remember the test that shows you've been exposed to it.
Right. So, um, I have my TB test that needs to be read-
Yep.
-today. Um, the, there is a vaccination that is used in many countries of the world called, uh, the BCG. That is a vaccination against like a bovine strain of tuberculosis. And it does help prevent some cases of TB in areas where there is a lot of tuberculosis. Um, it's not a great vaccine, so when the incidence of tuberculosis is low, when you don't have a lot of disease, it's not, um, it's not protective enough to use, so it's not used in the United States. But, um, we, uh, the, the Infectious Disease Control and Prevention Program, um, we get what we call B waivers, which are, um, anybody applying for, um, immigration status has a medical exam, and they look at their tuberculosis status. And many people are coming from countries that have, um, BCG vaccine. It doesn't totally prevent tuberculosis, but it helps decrease the overall numbers. Um, and for those people, there is the skin test, and that just shows you if you have been exposed to it. For people who have gotten the vaccine, sometimes that skin test can be positive from the vaccine, so we do a blood test to find out.
And there isn't any real way to, well, I don't think the treatment has changed dramatically either.
For tuberculosis?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's-
We have standard four-drug therapy that's been around for quite a long time. There are increasing rates of, um, drug resistance, drug-resistant tuberculosis in the world. Um, we, in the last four years, and I've been working here, have only had one case of drug-resistant tuberculosis that, you know, contracted it elsewhere.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, just got one more follow-up. I'm sorry, I was a science major, so I'm kind of like, I'm interested in public health. Do, are we, you know, now for, for those of us who are older, there is a shingles vaccine. But if essentially you now get the earlier vaccine for chickenpox, which didn't exist when we were, when I was younger, does that, will that reduce, that will more than likely reduce the long-term risk for shingles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thanks. There's a long line for that shingles shot. There's a long line.
Yeah, actually, I will say, it's been hard to get.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all in the queue for it. It's been in such great demand. That's the other piece of this that I worry about sometimes, is the supply side of the vaccine and the materials, because, you know, you know you have to have it, but it's not readily, readily available. I know that there's a long waitlist for shingles, yeah.
I remember lining up at Milwaukee High School, the entire town, just about waiting to get a shot. Yeah, I forget, maybe it was a sugar cube by then, but I'm not sure. Or, uh, in grade school, the whole school, the whole town going through.
Yeah.
And one was polio, and I'm not sure what the other one was, but-
Can I ask another polio question? Sorry, I'm really interested in this thing. We should do this offline. Um, so which, is it the Sabin or Salk vaccine? Because one is an attenuated virus and the other one is live. So which, which is which, and which is most largely primarily in use, do you know?
Um, put me on the spot here.
Yeah, one's live and one's dead. Okay.
We can look at-
My doctor friend with me.
You know, oh, gosh. Um, I, we use the inactivated polio vaccine.
Okay, so I think that's the, I don't know which one it is, but one-
Oh, gosh, I have my book.
One is inactivated. Because in the history, no, but in the history of, because I read medical history and the history of polio, that was a huge, that was a huge fight because, which was better, the, the one that was, was, was killed and caused the, or the, or the one that was actually still had, uh, live virus that you were taking. And one was a shot and one was liquid. That's what I recall, so.
And I, I do consider myself really lucky to, um, actually not, not necessarily know that, because polio is so rare. You know, it's not something that needs to be on the top of my, I, on my brain, because we do have good vaccination rates around polio right now. But the, um, vaccine science is really interesting. There are, there's a lot of, number of the vaccines are what we call live attenuated, and a number of them are, um, just, um, viral protein parts.
Right.
So those have really different potential side effects and different effects on the immune systems that can be, can be really confusing when you're looking at getting 15 vaccines and they all have different, you know, biological-
And Sabin and Salk, that, that was a huge ego fight, because they were basically saying, no, my vaccine is better than yours, but that's a piece of medical history, I'll stop going into this.
What's the building at Clackamas Community College name? There's one that's-
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, um-
Pauling?
Paul, yeah. Pauling, Linus Pauling.
Linus Pauling, and I think he invented, uh-
Vitamin C guy?
Um, I forget what it was.
It was one of the, yeah.
It wasn't, uh, it was, uh, I don't think it was-
I think it was vitamin C.
Huh?
Was it vitamin C?
No, I-
He's a chemist who got a Nobel Prize.
I think the opponent of vitamin C.
I don't know.
This was going to be trivia pursuit here.
Uh, Paul?
I have my history, it's just not in my brain right now.
Paul, I just want to, I just sent you a link, I just found a study that actually correlates the, um, autism and, um, anti-vaccine states or, or the vaccine, the states have, they rank on vaccines for measles, so.
It's really interesting how that, the, the information can be finessed in various ways and, um, but there, yeah, thank you. We'll take a look at that.
No, Pauling, I looked him up. He was, he, he worked in quantum chemistry and molecular biology. So he was more of a, then he liked vitamin C.
Oh, okay. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, with that, we will, um, announce that the board, uh, will adjourn as the Board-
No, Chair, no, there's, there's a public comment period now.
Oh. Oh, turn, if you turn the page. No, I don't have that on here. So any public comment?
It's here.
Oh, you see it there? I don't have that there. It just gives, says presentation and then goes on to Board of Health comments. Okay.
Board of Health public comment.
Okay, so does the Board of Health have any comment?
No, if there's any.
I think we talked here.
It's a presentation.
Okay, it says a presentation that-
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity to make public comment.
Do any members of the public in the room wish to comment?
Does anybody wish to make comment? Come on down, no. All right, I think we had plenty of that. All right, with that, uh, we'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And next up is the consent agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number One to Agency Services Contract with LifeWorks Northwest for Early Assessment and Support Alliance Services. Approval of an Intergovernmental Subrecipient Agreement with the City of Sandy, Sandy Senior and Community Center to Provide Social Services for Clackamas County Residents Age 60 and Over. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a board order accepting the final review, setting a public hearing for final assessment of the Starview Lane Local Improvement District. Approval of a contract with Parametric for the Oak Grove Lake Oswego Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge Feasibility Study. Approval of a contract with Murray Smith, Inc. for Design Services for ADA Improvements. Under the Finance Department, approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County Supplemental Budget Less Than 10% for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. Approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for Budgeting of New Specific Purpose, Purpose Revenue for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for Transfer of Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. Under Elected Officials, approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under County Council, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas and Multnomah Counties for the HIPAA and Part II Privacy Officer. Under Disaster Management, approval of a Goods and Service Contract with LowDocs NA for a Whole Body Digital X-Ray Scanning System. And under, um, Clackamas County Service District Number Five, which is Street Lighting, approval of a resolution for Clackamas County Service District Number Five for Transfer of Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2018-2019. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Okay, uh, do any commissioner want to remove, does any commissioner want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if it'll require removal or not.
Okay.
Um, under the, um, uh, fund transfers, um, under tourism funds specifically, there are no numbers. It says tourism fund expenses, culture, education, recreation, no number. Total expenditures, no number. Transferring from internet, internal county services and budgeting for the transfer of an IS software specialist senior position. So I don't know if, what happened there, or maybe, do we need to pull it and do it at a separate time?
Can, can that be deferred, looking to the administrator?
Well, let's wait and see if they have an answer first.
One moment, staff is checking.
Yep. I'm assuming we don't want to do a transfer of, of an undetermined amount.
Depends who you ask.
Hmm?
Depends who you ask.
Yeah, that's probably true.
I was going to pull the HIPAA agreement, 'cause, 'cause Stephen left, just, just testing him.
Crystal, can you just wait till next week, Crystal?
The net effect of the transfer is zero because it's between budget categories. So we do not have-
I should come to the microphone for that.
Yep.
All right, so the net effect of the transfer is zero because it's between two budget categories where essentially, um, there is a reduction happening between personal services and internal county services.
Can you speak up, please?
So the net effect between these two, it seems to be zero. What we're moving is removing the, essentially $70,000 and 470,000, $470,000. So the way our forms roll up, it appears to be zeros, but in a, in the supporting detail that I have here, there are numbers in the actual line item detail, so I apologize, because it is confusing the way it is presented. Yeah.
So the net effect, for the record, is 70,000 and change being transferred from one budget, line item budget to another.
To another, exactly.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Probably makes sense to make sure something like that is actually in there.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. And the next item is Commissioner Communications and-
Administrator Communications.
Oh, Administrator- Oh, Administrator Communications.
Thank you, Commissioners. Would you like to hear some good news?
Sure.
All right, Clackamas County learned yesterday that we received a Safe System Innovations Grant from the National Road to Zero Coalition. It's a grant for $131,600, which will help the county meet our goal of zero traffic fatalities by the year 2035 through our county's Drive to Zero Campaign. These funds will support proven safety countermeasures and messages to those most vulnerable to serious and fatal crashes in Clackamas County, especially those who live in rural Clackamas County. Also, in Water Environment Services, Wes, a customer recently contacted the county to express his appreciation for outstanding customer service received from the Wes Line crew. The Wes crew discovered a manhole, I'm sorry, the customer discovered a manhole in need of repair on his property and he contacted Wes for help. The Wes team of Bob Herr, Dylan Costa, and Tom Van der Zanden responded quickly and repaired the manhole. The customer said the Wes crew went above and beyond and made the customer feel valued, which not only meets your goal, Commissioners, of building public trust through good government, but was, the customer said, a reminder of what Maya Angelou has said. People will forget what you said, they will forget what you did, but they will never forget how you made them feel. So thank you to our Wes Line crew for outstanding customer service, along with all the other county employees who every day provide outstanding customer service. That is my good news for you today in my report, Commissioners.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today is April 11th. It is my daughter Christine's 34th birthday today. And I've just been reflecting a lot about her life and some of the lessons and the ways that, the lessons that she has taught me really combine with all of the different things we do in local county government. There are so many ways that people who have special needs, are vulnerable populations, are people with disabilities in our community, are affected by all that we do. For her life specifically, historically, some things that I've been reflecting on are, when she was born, the, most children before that time went to the state institution of Fairview. When she was very young, the institution closed to children with significant disabilities. And there was a time in our history where families that were in the community, so this is, you know, 34 years ago, our most significant children, significant challenged children and families. The government did not provide support to them, really at all. There was very little support. There was some special education services, which had just become mandated by the federal government and services were very, very limited. So when I think about through the course of her life and the different advocacy efforts that I've been involved in, and even just looking at our consent agenda today, the different things, if you're talking about ADA ramps, you think about what we all did yesterday of going to the Willamette Falls Legacy Trust group there at the winery at Tomwater. We heard about how accessibility is a key part of the Riverwalk planning. We think about what we do with our clean water and all of the services with our vaccines and all that we do to keep our communities healthy. So many interrelationships. Whereas before I was a Commissioner, my focus was so much on vulnerable populations, vulnerable populations, vulnerable populations. Now, as a Commissioner serving now over two years, it's all the interrelationships that are so important that we focus on every day. So hats off to my precious Christine, 34, 34 years old today. We will be going to her, she lives in a foster home with four other adults with developmental disabilities. We get lots of hugs there. Her foster provider will be playing his guitar and singing songs. There'll be lots of balloons and some pizza. Her dad will be there along with his wife and Christine's two other younger siblings. The other parents of the other adults will also be there at her party. We, it gets very noisy and very loud. Christine's grandfather, Lauren Fisher, has Alzheimer's and he loves to sing Happy Birthday. So he does not remember that we just sang Happy Birthday, of which last year when we had Christine's party, we sang Happy Birthday over and over again, which Christine just loves. She loves to have Happy Birthday sung. And we will do it over and over and over again. And everybody will be happy and everybody will enjoy the moment. Hopefully Christine's grandmother, who's over 80 years old, will pull out the hula hoop yet again and hula hoop for everybody, which is quite a marvelous sight. Everyone will be engaged. We will FaceTime to Christine's sister Joy in California and her brother Nathan back east. And we will celebrate this time of community, family, and caring for people who are our most special in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, Happy Birthday Christine, that's fantastic. Isn't it wonderful when you see your kids reach those milestones too? I mean, really, and what a gift. It sounds like she's been such a gift to everyone. I think that our life is touched, so thank you so much for sharing that. And does she like, she likes balloons? You said a lot?
Yes, she loves balloons.
Oh, good, well, I hope you have many, many balloons there for her and you have a lovely evening with your family. That's, that's very touching. On other notes, wow, I don't really know where to start. As many of you know, I'm kind of in nursing a cold right now and I think it's because it's been, this has been a really long week. Yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with the woman who is going to be replacing Mike Bondi, who manages our Agricultural Research Center and, you know, does, has been doing all of our, our work with 4H and her name is Angela Sandino. One of the reasons I had to talk with them is because, you know, I've been looking into pollination initiatives and in particular Oregon State University is a center of research for pollination ecology, which I, I have been very, very interested in for a number of years. So I kind of picked their brains about what it would take to, you know, become a pollination campus here. And particularly because there, it looks as if they're going to be breaking ground this spring on our campus for their new building, okay? And it is going to be, they're doing all their due diligence, this will make Ken happy, to be the first net zero CLT building on our campus, which they believe will set the stage for a courthouse as well. So that's gonna be quite the thing. They already are planning to have a wetlands area there that they're going to be working with and, and using as an education. They'll have kitchens for nutrition education. And I kind of put the, the, no pun intended, bug in their ear to see if they wouldn't mind, wouldn't mind taking a look at also having some kind of a pollination garden on our campus. So that's more to be said about that. And we are, I am going to be meeting with the chief entomologists who are doing all this research to find out what they think. We'll do a tour of Enrec to see the research that's going on there. And obviously, any of our Commissioners are always very welcome to, to come along with that. The Association of Oregon Counties met on Monday and I am proud to say that we are really on the road to economic solvency. There, there, we are really kind of pulling out all the stops to get all our internal controls in place. We have hired an internal finance person. So I'm actually feeling very, very happy about the fact that this organization is continuing to professionalize. The budget looks good, they have the money. And we have a new finance committee and audit, finance slash audit committee that's really doing a great job with that oversight in a very detailed way. Went to the Park Avenue Community Meeting. I think all of us or most of us were there in that one. That's the, the meeting that they're talking about what's gonna happen in that corridor. And we'll, I bet Paul will have plenty to say about that, I think, when, when you get your turn. I went to, we all, I think, were at the Willamette Falls Trust meeting or campaign or party last night, which was very, very nice. They've managed to garner $7 million in donations to really help with the Riverwalk. On top of that, I did unlock the locks yesterday where that state commission really looked at funding mechanisms for long-term operations and maintenance. And MPAC. So I did unlock the locks, MPAC, and then ran to the, to the trust event. But MPAC, we took a look at census, you know, how we're managing our census processes in the Tri County arena. And also we had a presentation on the parks bond measure. So in any case, that was my week. It isn't over yet and hopefully I can shake this cold. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Next was, Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's been a busy week and it looks like it's gonna continue to be busy through, through the weekend and on into next week before my wife and I leave for a few days vacation. We're gonna celebrate our 50th wedding anniversary next week, so...
Congratulations.
Looking forward to that. This week testified on courthouse funding at, at Salem and expect to be doing that again tomorrow. So far, things are looking good. Fingers crossed, of course, until the check, until the check is received, you never know. But the fact that previous county commissions thought ahead and built this campus with the intention of having a courthouse located here on the campus with the infrastructure already in place has helped us a great deal. So kudos to previous county commissions thinking 20 years ahead. It has helped us in this project. I attended the Children's Center's Honors Event in which Tanya Hunt was honored for her service to, to the families and children, particularly of abused children. It was a well-deserved honor. I think she spent at least 15 years of her life working in, in this arena and helping abused children. Met with Senator Olson this week down at Salem to discuss the Veterans Property Tax Exemption Bill for disabled veterans. There's some negotiations going on as to how much the individual counties will be able to put sideboards around qualifications. But overall, it looks like a pretty good bill and it should not be too painful to our budget if, if it is in fact adopted. And it does give the county the opportunity to decide just exactly how much they feel they can afford to, to grant to a disabled veteran, financially speaking. Like a number of other people, I went to the Park Avenue Meeting, Clackamas County Business Alliance Breakfast, where we heard from our state treasurer, the Willamette Falls Trust Campaign last night. As was pointed out by Martha, two families have donated five and seven million, excuse me, five and $2 million respectively to the campaign. So they're almost halfway where they need to be for their private funding campaign. And then last but not least, several of us went out to the Wooden Shoe Tulip Farm this week. They are moving into the hemp business, have actually done so. They're gonna be planting about 200 acres of hemp this year for the production of C, CD...
CBD.
CBD, a chemical, I guess, that can help people's health. I don't know too much about it. I will say this, there's an incredible investment that they've made in the equipment there. They are doing it the way it should be done. They are behaving as good neighbors to their neighbors. And they start people at $14 an hour and at least in some cases, within a year, are moving people into the $20-plus dollar an hour range with, with benefits and that is a living wage. That is long-term a product for, that can make clothing, it can make rope, there's a, it can make concrete blocks that are lighter than normal concrete blocks. There's a wide variety of things that, that the product can do. And hopefully, people will do it in a responsible manner. And on that note, I will go to the dogs. So this is Max. He is an eight-year-old and weighs 60 pounds and is looking for a quiet home. He is pretty predictable with breakfast, dinner, walks, and cuddle time. He will be shy at first, but will slowly come out of his shell and you'll see he is a sweet boy. He's looking for a home with no children. If you're looking for a companion pal, if you have a quiet home and you're okay with being patient with him, then please go and meet him today. For more information about Max or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, we had a longer-than-anticipated business meeting and I was gonna ask Gary for a budget update, but I have an engagement at noon I need to be at, so I need to leave here just a matter of minutes. I also wanted to talk a little bit about transportation and our trip to Washington DC, but I'm gonna postpone that and I wanna just talk about one other issue and that is really about trust, trust with our citizens, public involvement, and how we've done it. And I, I want to say with eight years, I don't mean any, I would just wanna make this as positive as possible. I think that in my view, looking over the last eight years, you know, I think, I'd say that four years ago, I think we, we kind of, I would say, did our best when we actually established, you know, spirit and the T of spirit being trust. And part of that was how we did our public engagement. And if we could get closer back to that where we were, that'd be fantastic. I think that we have been, we've had some great examples of public involvement that I feel has been genuine, has been transparent. And I think that we need to look at our successes and go back to that. And the reason I say that is, is I, I guess I don't expect every jurisdiction in the state or in the region to have the same level or have the bar as high as we do. But if we could, number, number one, lead with it by example, you know, less today mentioned the night meetings, I think that's one small thing we can do to get there. But more about when we engage the public on public processes and whether it's Park Avenue or whether it's this, the bridge, the study we just approved today for the bridge between Oak Grove and Milwaukee and how we assemble that and not be subordinate to another jurisdiction, metro in this case, when it comes to how we structure that public involvement piece, that, that if we're gonna do something in Clackamas County, we do it at the bar, where the bar is set for Clackamas County and not do it in a way that is, again, not to our level. There are a number of people that really wanted to have a dialogue and wanted to learn from a dialogue, which really didn't occur Tuesday evening. And I'm just hoping that that's, that, that will change. I mean, that's one meeting, but I'm just hoping that we can get back to that. You know, one example of great public involvement, recent one, I mean, it's not the same thing. We're not at the same level and maybe that can come in the future. But what we did with the Camby Ferry, we held a public forum. We did a lot of stuff with the public alone. And then we followed up with a, a public forum with the county commissioners there. And, but both of those events, with and without the county commissioners, there was a microphone, people could speak their mind and could say what they want to say. And people learned from that. Everyone in that audience learned from the questions and learned from the answers. And if had we had more of that on Tuesday night, I think we could have alleviated some of the people that left a little bit early and left a little bit unhappy. So again, I, I think that we've got some great examples to cite and look back on and we ought to adhere to that as best we can. And with that, I'm gonna pass, Martha had missed this, I'm gonna pass this on to the Chair to, to do and then I'm gonna take off.
Okay. Thank you. And so like other folks, we just got back from Wash, well, Paul and I got back from Washington. Quite a place, don't wanna spend much time there. But we always have to make sure that they know who we are. Also, working on a committee with other representatives of Clackamas County on T2020. Sometimes when you want something, you have to negotiate. So Clackamas County's number one policy, uh, project is?
205.
No, it isn't.
Oh, courthouse.
Uh, road project, I'm sorry, I should've been clear on that.
Oh.
What is it? Do you know?
Sunrise.
Sunrise.
Yeah.
Is that true? All right. It is our number one priority with, with the T2020. The second one is, does anyone know what that is?
I205?
No.
No?
No, so I, so it's C to C.
Ah.
Now, that's Clackamas County 172nd to about 181st and that is a project that Gresham is very interested in.
When you're gonna give us a test, would you let us know in advance, Mr. Chairman?
Well, then it would be a test, wouldn't it?
Well, you know, we could at least practice.
I, I don't know what Paul was suggesting, but the bridge to Lake Oswego is a bridge that we think is very important, that community supports. that we think is very important, that community supports, but the chances of us getting five projects in Clackamas County, when we include the entire metro region, is about zero. One project, we're gonna, I told them today that if we don't get a project, we're not supporting any transportation measure. So, the other thing is that when you want something from, when you want other people to support your projects, what do you usually do? You talk to them about the projects they want, and you kind of negotiate, we'll support yours if you support ours, kind of deal. So, again, I don't know what Paul was suggesting, but Tuolleton wants Tuolleton Valley Highway. So, we said, we'll support that if you support ours. They said, yes, they would. Multnomah County wants C to C, so we, I can't remember what project we supported, we're gonna support. So, next week or Monday, I'm gonna fill out a survey. The survey will support, they told us to pick 15. There's 72 projects. They're hoping that they can eliminate 10 projects that no one's gonna support. I hope they do. They're gonna be getting down to probably five projects region-wide. And so, how one is successful in one's project is support, is in supporting other people's projects. And so, I'm gonna be filling out that survey, and what, the bridge to Lake Oswego, while it is important, is nobody cares in Washington County or in Multnomah County about that bridge. Nobody cares. It is gonna be one of those top 15. For me, it's gonna be the top 10, and it's gonna be probably number six, because we need to support those projects that the region supports or our partners support in the region. And so, it's got, you know, some of those things have to move around, because our number one priority is?
Sunrise.
Sunrise.
Sunrise. Alright. So, Tuesday night, excellent meeting. Wasn't the first meeting, it was part of many meetings. I think the survey which they took was surprising to me. I, I think it was a surprise to Paul, 'cause it was actually the opposite of what I heard, been hearing for a long time about the citizens of Oak Grove Park Avenue area. I had no idea that they would accept density into the neighborhoods, 'cause I've been hearing the exact opposite for, for as long as I can remember. The survey indicated quite, quite a few, majority, far majority of people would support density. That's, now, I'm not talking about high-rises or four-story buildings, talk about duplexes, townhouses, things, smaller apartments, and they would also want more roads into their neighborhoods, which I was also surprised about.
Better roads.
And better roads in that neighborhood. But their limitation is they didn't want a lot of roads crossing the trolley trail. So, they wouldn't be, you know, a grid system so much as roads that allowed folks to get to their homes, and they had some great pictures of what that would be, and I never heard a single person complain about the meeting. It was very well-attended. I did sit at a table and never heard a person, and actually, I never saw anyone leave. We left after the survey was done, so we were the first two to leave. Caught some lunch, it was a long day, or dinner, but I'm a little confused. I think that we have developed trust in our community, and that, that presentation was an example of it. They, in the beginning, I'll tell you, the first one I went to, the planner brought in this grid system that was an example of something in some other place, and they said, we're not gonna do that again, we're gonna start one-on-one, knocking on doors, we're gonna figure out what this community is willing to do, and they're doing that. Now, they're looking for volunteers to knock on doors, make sure everyone's there, which I'm happy to do. But it's, it's, I think we have come a long way since, you know, a few years ago, complete communities, which is what was happening when, many years ago, that had been, 15 years ago, really went through a process of communicating with citizens. I thought this was even more valuable, thanks to electronic tools, which was an app so you could vote, and then they also took people who didn't, weren't familiar with their phones out of work that, they did it. But it was a great process. I am sorry Paul didn't think so, but boy, I'm proud of the work that our team is doing, and, and so, thank you for your hard work, and I gotta say that Karen Burek did a fantastic job, and those people who have volunteered to get us to this process, this is grant-funded project that Metro's doing, I really thought that we would get to this point and Metro would say, well, it's obvious, no one wants anything done, let's, you know, we're not gonna give you the rest of the grant money, but when I left there, I thought, wow, Metro's gonna be impressed, and they're gonna move forward with that grant, and we're gonna get a real study, and it's over, you know, it's like a $200,000 grant, there's like a hundred and something thousand left in it. We're gonna do a thorough process, and the commission's here and ready to get to work and make this a success. So, with that, thank you very much, and we're adjourned.